...the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome. It's the third day, May 4th, 2017. Turn our microphones on. Appreciate your joining us at the workshop tonight. If you haven't signed in, we'd ask you to sign in at the back table there. And as a workshop, we generally do allow some conversation between people who have things before the council. It's a little different than our formal meetings on Tuesday, but we do wait for you to request permission to speak and then be recognized. When you are recognized, please step to the podium and then give your name and address for us, for the record, please. For those of you that haven't been here in a while, we are recording our meetings in the back here, so we do have video and audio of all the meetings online. Start off with planning and zoning. We have Cory Haley Sheldon and Tim McCoy requesting a re-subdivision of two existing parcels. The council, I've seen the information on this, do they have any questions? Or the planner, any questions at this time on that parcel?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
I do have, you know, one question that I have, you know, basically going through this, it looks like to me it's primarily a lot line reconfiguration, pretty much. We require a fee of $200 and then a $500 escrow. On average of that $500, how much do we typically refund? If you were to guess.
Not a lot of the $500, probably at most $100.
So, to do a lot line configuration, which really doesn't, I guess, affect the city, it affects the county more than us, correct? Because they're the ones who have the legal name, description, calculated on tax.
Well, right, it's recorded there. Yeah, in this case, they had to go through the reconfiguration to clear title for selling their property. I guess, we go through and make sure that lots meet our ordinance requirements and then, of course, stamp law. We sign off on it before it can get recorded. So, that's how it works. And then, there was no public hearing or anything for that one.
I just, I guess my comment is, I just, to me, it seems pretty cut and dry on what they're doing. So, you know, for, to cost, you know, $700 to do that, when the county, you know, takes care of most of the legal part of it?
This one was a little more, I guess, confusing when they first began, because they weren't even aware that the property wasn't theirs until they tried to sell. So, you know, I did have to spend some time in helping them dig through some of the history on it, so that they could present that to their title company. And they were willing, I mean, they knew that, so they were willing and had asked me to help them. They're still trying to get their title company to pay for it, because they did have title insurance. So, it's, hopefully, they can convince them.
Just to clarify, the $500 escrow, would their fee normally come out of that escrow?
No.
No.
So, you've got a fee and you're saying there's another 400?
Right. And I reduced the escrow for them, because it was fairly simple. I believe the usual, the usual amount is, I think, $1,000.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
Yeah, if you look at the application, it's a $200 filing fee and typically a $1,000 escrow account.
Other comments or questions at this time on that one? We'll move on to the code enforcement. Kurt Anderson, Planner Stockman, did you wish to address anything on this that we should know?
Well, he was gonna be here tonight, I don't see him. He was forwarded the information. And Ms. Wozniak and I met with him on site, along with the conservation, well, the conservation officer was there, as well as a deputy. And Becky and I were kind of surprised that it came up again, because we had gone through this with him last year. His recollection of some of the discussions that we had was not that great, or maybe he misunderstood, but the information you got today was Becky showing you and basically backing up my statement, which said, you know, we had told him all this last year. And the map, which shows the wetland boundary and the distance from the wetland, was intended just to give him an idea in relation to his existing shed. She had written on there 160 feet, so she had done that so that he had a, basically, a measuring point to know where the edge of the wetland was and that he was supposed to stay out of that. So, he wasn't clear that, you know, disturbing the wetland and to a point where it's rutted and the vegetation is not growing, that is against state statute. Not to mention the city ordinance, which, under the motor vehicle section, prohibits this kind of activity for ATVs and off-road vehicles. I also contacted Isanty County today, because they had the mud running place up there previously, somewhere near Crown. And I was curious as to why that closed down recently. And I first contacted the township, and they directed me to the county. And they said that it was never permitted. They worked for about two years to get that closed down up there. They, that was quite a bigger operation with 200 to 300 people. They had camping overnight, they had food vendors. So, that was a little bigger operation. And they, they had 20 acres, I guess. And since it started back in, I don't know, around 2000 is what they estimated, the county has adopted an ordinance to allow that kind of thing. But even the 20 acres up there does not meet their minimum lot size either. So, and they had a lot of the same issues with the noise and mud on the road and, more like nuisance issues. In that scenario, they had created their own pond, so they were not disturbing the wetland. But as you can see by the map, I included with my memo, the setbacks, just the 100 feet that you have to stay away from the wetland, and then the 100 feet that you have to stay back away from the property lines, just, you know, eats up too much of this five-acre site. And there's, there's no room left over to even create a pond artificially or, or allow such activity on the Anderson property.
Any questions from the council at this point?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Just a question to Stockman. So, is, are the Andersons under the understanding now that they cannot operate?
Yes.
Okay.
That was the way we left it, when we left the property.
And your beliefs that they might be here tonight was to...
I thought they were gonna come in and hear what you had to say. And they wanted to make a plea to, you know, they're very well intentioned as to why they were doing this. But, you know, I did the best I could explaining to them that, you know, unless the ordinance were to change, you're still in violation. So, it was difficult, I believe, for them to understand why. But I will also follow up after Tuesday's meeting and provide them with your action, so they are aware of it.
From the council's standpoint, it seems like it's fairly well documented. Is there any action other than reinforcing what the ordinance says and what has been communicated from the DNR and the planner at this point? Does the council want to do anything differently, or...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I think it's clear that it's just not a, it's not something you can do, so...
I agree.
All right. Nobody has anything else on that, we'll move on. Scott Alderson, it's a request for council action. Would you like to share with us your updates?
This is Scott Alderson, 1-85603, Road Northwest, Oakmont, Minnesota, 55303. I have some photographs and property layouts that I sketched out for each of you, and I passed them on, or by tape, when I passed them on, or...
Do you have an additional that you can put in the back of the room?
I brought seven.
Brian, or Dan, can we share?
Well, we can share, yeah.
Yep. Because I have to make sure there's one in the back of the room for the public to see.
Take one and pass them on, I guess, yeah.
The photographs are, basically, show the rough drawing. I'm not really an artist, so it just kind of helps. I stopped at City Hall, I believe it was last week, and I talked to the building contractor.
Oh, Andy?
Yeah, I talked to Andy. And told him what I wanted to do with the fence, because the fence is kind of, it was kind of thrown up as a, as a, to keep the recycle on the driveway and to keep the, kind of keep the dogs and the kids in. And I wanted to, I want to replace it. We've got some chain link fence, and I want to replace it and kind of straighten out the line, because it varies from fog line that goes anywhere from nine to 17 feet. It kind of varies as with the swale. And I didn't pay attention to the swale when I first put it up, so I've gone out since and revamped it all, and gone from the white fog line on my side of the road, and now laid it out. And there's paint on the road, as you can see in the, well, in the pictures, there's paint on the road, in my ditch, showing where the new fence I, we're planning on putting it. And it's 11 feet off the road versus the nine to 17 squiggle lines or whatever. And then with, with that, I also talked to my neighbor, and we were planning on putting a place to park the camper on the north side of our property at an angle. And Tim's got no problem with it at all, and him and I were out there and kind of walked it off, so that he still had view of the road and everything would work with him. I mean, I've always tried to work with Tim as far as making things look beautiful for him. And the color coordinations to it all is what we're, what we're planning on doing with that. And it's also the swinging gate that's on the property, we still have to purchase the lumber for that. That's one of the projects that's on the, on the, on our personal work, and I've done this here, trying to get that done. I bought a bunch of recycle, and we're gonna finish the grate out in the driveway, because the driveway's all screwed up, and just kind of continue to beautify and make the property proper, I guess. Another thing that I wanted to check out, because my brother-in-law is moving to Alaska, and his house sold way ahead of time. He was supposed to sell by the end of May, and it's sold, and he has to be out of it on the 15th. And he's planning on coming to our house for 15 days, and he's got, he's got a large boat, and there's his camper, his wonton, and then a 24-foot trailer hooked to his other pickup. And they're only gonna be there for 15 days, and then, because they're taking off for Alaska, him and his new wife are moving to, moving up to Alaska on Memorial Weekend. So, I just wanted to bring it to the city council and let you guys know, and hopefully there is no problem with that going on. I mean, he's not moving in permanently, he's moving in and getting out as fast as he can, but he has things, legal things, he has to tie up with the house and the property that he sold. And I just, I don't want any complaints, I don't want to have, I don't want to have anybody in the community getting upset, because we've got trucks, and now we've got campers and boats and all kinds of stuff, and they're not staying. I think he's got four or five vehicles that they're, that they're taking soon as they leave on Memorial Weekend. So, that's, that, that was one of the other, that was, that was on the, on my agenda for dealing for, for the, for the property. And then, we also have another deal that's been going on, bought on our property, and I have, well, I just, I wrote up a statement, so I'll read my statement, and then we can go from there, if that's right here. Mayor?
Good.
Okay. Mary Rainville has continuously attacked our conditional use permit for what I believe is lack of respect for our business and for my livelihood. As I've stated before, without trucks, nothing would be available to the public for purchase, food, clothing, supplies. We, my family, have cleaned up and bettered our, and beautified our property in compliance with the city, have nullled in recommendations and requests, also gone above and beyond, and will continue to do so. Our family is afraid of the power of Mary Rainville to our property and business. There have been few incidences in regard to my prop, my getting into my driveway with the semi. So, with this in mind, we have contacted Oida, which is an independent trucking agency, State Patrol, and the Inoka County Sheriff's Department, and are afraid, and a friend who is a lawyer, because of Mary Rainville's misuse of power. We feel threatened and are considering harassment and restraining order. Mary contacted the Ramsey Fire Department, Carrie, about her bonfire, and at the end of, after there was an incident with the driveway about three, four weeks ago, we believe Mary is in violation of code of conduct. We follow, we follow the rule of the city, state, and federal. And I have gone down and I picked up what you guys have at the office for burning permits, and we have not violated that whenever we've had our fires. We've always had to have the state or the Ramsey come out and look at our fire pile, and we've removed anything previously to our bonfires and gotten permits for every single time we've had a fire. As far as interaction with council members, there's the code of conduct, you, members of the committee have all signed and had to abide by that. Council members shall refrain from abuse of conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks upon characters or motives of other members of the city council, boards, commissions, committees, staff, or the public. We feel that there's, because we feel threatened, and have it, have in the past, and is continuing. Improper influence, council members shall refrain from using their position improperly influenced deliberations or decisions of city staff, boards, commissions, committees. By contacting the Ramsey fire, Ramsey, this, the Ramsey fire, Carrie at the fire station, because he called me and said, "I don't know what's really going on here," he says, "but I'm supposed to call you and talk to you about your fire pile, because you've got stuff that can't be burned." We already knew that. We don't slay our fire until October 10th, and I come and get a permit for that. There's a lot of stuff in there, and I told Carrie that, "There's a lot of stuff in there, there's, there's plastic paper." And there's also, in fact, I brought some of the samples out of it. There's this colored paper, it's yellow and black, that we know that has to come out of it. This is a biodegradable material that is burnable. State's already looked at it. It's not anything that's gonna harm, harm the environment. It goes into the ground and it rots away within less than a year. This stuff is plastic covered, we do know that. And as I explained to Carrie, that we take, it's sitting in a pile, because our, my son is making a, trying to make a fort and use the plastic to cover up his fort with to keep dry. So, we already knew about all that. And positive work for, work environment, council members shall support a positive, efficient, and effective environment for residents, business, and city employees. We don't feel like, I mean, we've, in the past and current, Mary has attacked our conditional use permit, and I've got people that drive by and have seen, have witnessed things going on with, with the driving and whatnot, and we have since been by the State Patrol. We have been since told to install cameras in all of our vehicles, so that they can, they said, they, I've talked to the Inoka County Sheriff's Department, we've talked to State Patrol, we've talked to Oida, and we've talked to lawyers about the problem. And I'm hoping the city council, whether it's publicly spoken, or whether you guys have your meeting in private, that you guys are able to discuss this and come up with a solution, so that we, my family and myself, feel a little bit safer at our house. We've put a, put a, put a request into the Inoka County to have signs put up for trucks coming, trucks entering and exiting the property. I can only get into my property via two driveways, the driveway to the south, I cannot get in with the truck and trailer and do any kind of turning and maneuvering at all. I can barely get my truck out of there by itself, the tractor, semi tractor by itself out there. I can enter and exit only out of my, the north driveway. We have timed it, and it takes me less than 30 seconds if everybody gives me the 30 seconds. Most of my neighbors, most of the people coming on that road, realize that and give me the courtesy of this. We've put, installed, I've installed, I believe, about $1,200 worth of flashing lights on my vehicles, and there's State Patrol. I talked to State Patrol, and with all the flashing lights, at that point in time, I've changed from being a private vehicle to being a road, a vehicle that is considered a, what do they call it? It's, to do with the state, where flashing lights, you're supposed to relinquish and back down. I don't remember the exact terminology of it. And we've talked, we've talked to them about it, and you're supposed to stay at least 500 feet back, according to the law, and that's not happening. So, again, I'm asking for, I'm asking for some, some guidance from the city council on all of these things that I've brought before you, and hope that we can, we can come to some conclusions that make everybody happy.
First of all, I'll say that you mentioned whether we have meetings in public or in private. All of our meetings are held in public, so there aren't the private discussions. The only discussions we have are typically staff-related or negotiations-related, so those are closed meetings, which we do record and meet with our lawyer on those types of things. So, any discussion we have as a council is open. There's records of what we discussed, they're open to the public. Regarding any particular concern that you have, I will say that I don't personally recall your property or your name even coming up since the last time you were here. So, if, if there's any undue pressures, not coming before the council. You know, it's a separate issue if a resident has a concern, and then, from what I've, what I've seen, you know, you've got a large pile with, as you stated, things in there that can't be burned.
Correct.
People don't know when you're gonna burn it, it's legitimate to at least question that. And the authority we do have in here is the Ramsey Fire Department, so...
Correct.
So, if the Ramsey Fire Department's been contacted, and they said, "No, he burns October 10th, we checked the pile before it's burned, and it's within the legal size, it's permitted, and it's properly permitted," the city has no concern. If the fire department comes in, or the DNR, or anybody else comes in and says its location, or its size, or its content is a problem, they would deal with you. If it doesn't, if that doesn't work, it's probably gonna end up with the council. But, you know, along those lines, we have not been addressing specific your concerns. You came and said you were gonna clean things up, you're gonna address things as listed. We're assuming that's going on, we haven't heard otherwise from our planner. So, regarding that, I will give Councilmember Rainville a chance to express herself, since you directly covered that. But I would like to ask, 66 is a county road, 11 feet from the fog line, is that allowable for a chain link fence?
Well, we would prefer it's out farther, because you need room for snow storage, stuff in the winter time, and you'd be happier if it's out farther, because if the plows go by and you get a real heavy snow, it's, it's gonna knock it over, it's gonna push it. You should be out at least 33 feet. I realize that it's just a prescriptive easement, so you technically own to the center of the road. The prescriptive easement allows the county to use whatever they've been using, so they could argue that they've been using up to 33 feet for maintaining the road and for snow storage. So, I would appreciate it if you would move your fence back up, but I can't, that's your choice, I guess, at this point.
What about the sign being inside of the fence?
The sign, Mr. Mayor, the sign, there's two posts for the sign. The first one is at, the one closest to the road is at nine foot, and the other one is like 11.6 or something like that, 11.5, 11.6 is where the two posts are from the fog, from the fog, from the west fog line.
And the paint mark that you have showing where the fence would be?
Right, right next to it, goes right next to the 11-foot one, yes.
The concern is, if the county, again, it's responsibility to maintain that sign, if they had to come in and do anything on that sign, they're, they're straddling the fence at this point.
Yes.
So, our preference would be to move a little further west, so that the sign and as much county right-of-way or prescriptive easement as possible could be, at least you're not splitting a sign down the middle.
Well, I did, I did look at that, but when I was painting the lines, it's like, okay, well, bring it up and either go at the 11, you know, probably the 11, probably 12 foot would probably make things right outside of...
Just make sure they had to dig that post out there, they're not fighting the fence.
Yeah, right, right. So that, I mean, that would, yeah, I mean, like I said, I started measuring, and I started at one end, and by the time I got there, it's like, whatever, I just kept measuring, because I'd already picked the 11-foot and had already done most of the other side of the road and stuff, so... But I can, yeah, we can, I can make sure that the sign's on the other side of, on the other side of the fence.
All right, I'm gonna start with Planner Stockman, if you have any updates.
No, I haven't worked with Mr. Howdersen since you stated that he was here last. I do have a couple comments on what he said. I would agree with Councilmember Bettinger on the setback of the fence. Also, I'd like to state that, Mr. Howdersen, it was not Ms. Rainville, but it was me and the building official that noticed your burn pile. So, we were the ones that asked Ms. Leduser to contact the fire marshal, and he did notice those things were not burnable or, you know, legal within a pile. And I did tell him that I knew you only had one bonfire a year, and you always get a permit. But at any rate, we just had it checked out, and so it was not Ms. Rainville.
Well, I was misinformed.
And then, lastly, the only comment I have about your camper parking is just be sure that you're five feet off the lot line over there.
And that's one of the things, like I said, I talked, we talked to Tim, because it's not, we're not, we're not sure 100% on where the property line is. There's the telephone box at the top of the road, and we've always tried to make the telephone pole, we believe that the telephone pole... And we've always tried to make the telephone pole, we believe that the telephone pole, we haven't gone, nobody's gone out there and done, you know, I mean, him and I have a real easy relationship and we've just kind of said that that's kind of where, where the line is. And so, he's got trees planted, he says, "Well, my trees are on your property." And it's like, "Well, whatever." So, that's why I, my trees go in line with his trees.
Okay.
And I, that's what I had asked him, you know, I mean, if I put it back the camper up right to the, the trees and he's like, he, he told me that he doesn't care, you know, I mean, it's not sitting there year round. It sits there for a couple of months during the summer and then it goes right back in our shop and park and is stored for winter inside.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not a perm, it's not, I mean, it's a, we're planning on being a, um, a permanent summer parking there. It's, the camper's not going to be there a year round. If I store it inside, we can leave it on. We can plug in, so I don't have to, so I don't have to winterize it. I don't like winterizing, that thing, it's a big animal.
Okay, I just wanted you to be aware of the five-foot setback and, you know, in case your neighbor were to change and.
Right.
They complained or whatever.
Right.
That sounds fine if you guys have agreed.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmembers, other questions or comments at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Um, I, I'm very surprised at, at your comments, sir. Um, when you were in front of the council a couple of years back, all council members, um, participated in that conversation and agreements were made, agreements were adhered to. Um, since then, I've not been on your property, other maybe to drop a piece of literature, not been on your property, not watched your property, I drive by it every day. Recently, I did contact the, uh, fire captain or the fire chief because I had residents contact me about your burning piles, the big piles of wood. And I said I would contact the, the fire department and just ask. And that's all I've ever done. So, all of these other things that you are accusing me of and contacting the sheriff and attorneys and all of this, I'm not sure where you're getting information from or from who, uh, but none, there's no truth to any of that. Again, I participated in conversation with the entire council when you were in front of us, of us a couple of years ago. Since that time, I've made one call and it was probably a month ago, um, to the fire chief in regards to your burning permit. He had said that you'd have one in the fall, you, um, get a permit, talked to Cory, Cory said you get the permit, you, you do it correctly. I've not done anything else. So, I, again, I don't know where you're getting your information or from who, um, but before you go ahead and start publicly accusing me of things, I would appreciate a conversation so that we can, uh, come to an agreement that those things are not true. Thank you.
And I will reiterate, it has not come up before the council. And that's the only way any action or any, other than a, a call to city office or to another officiating body, it's the only way we would take any actions. And frankly, your, your, your name or your property hasn't come up since the last time you were here, so. If, if there's somebody saying that, it certainly isn't something that, that Councilmember Rainville's bringing before this body to take any action. I, I think best would be if, if you guys have a private conversation and iron that out if there's anything else that needs to be discussed. It's not, there's been no action coming for the council on that, so. We're simply, uh, expecting that if there's anything different, we're going to hear it from our planner. Otherwise, we're expecting that you're doing everything we need on.
Okay, sounds good.
Anything else from the council? All right, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
We're going to go on with, uh, Amanda Wilder, her request for, uh, temporary porta potties.
I'm Amanda Wilder and I am the children's director at Nowland Alliance Church. And we've run a sports program at the Nowland Park for ten-plus years. And with the program's growth, it's become an issue, we use the whole softball field, we use the infield area for the older group of kids, around fifty boys play in, or the infield area, and then around fifty boys play on the outfield area. And our youngest boys are playing in the grassy outfield area. And, um, the demographic has changed a bit in that it used to be parents would stay and watch their kids. And we have more parents that are leaving, so it leaves our leaders to make sure that the little five to eight-year-olds get safely to the bathroom, which is kind of out of view from that vantage point. So, I'm just requesting to, um, put a porta potty. I went and looked at the park and it looks like the outside of the field, the volleyball court. I'm open to other suggestions if it's a point. That was just kind of a starting point. The church would pay for the porta potty. Any tippings or fees that would come up with that, I would gladly pay for. Yes, that's my request. I'm happy to take any questions.
You proposing a, a standard porta potty or a handicap?
Um, a standard, the, what I've pressed out.
Okay. One concern is pumping it?
Okay.
Um, you have to get a truck down there to, to pump it?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ricker?
A couple items along with it. I think, and we have to ask obviously if Rodmiker's mine, but if we, if we got one, we could place it down on that end and they, with the gate there, they may be able to easily come in. You know, I don't know how long their hose is where they can, they need, or how close they need to get. But the other thought, I guess, in my opinion is, we are, and we have now gotten a, a porta potty for, by the skating rink. So, I guess it would be, in my opinion, for the city just to get a port, another porta potty year round and we have them move it, you know, have it in the park over there during the summer months and then move it next to the skating rink in the winter rounds.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Uh, I, I'm all in favor of them, uh, placing a, a porta potty for the use of their, their, the children in the church there. I'm not in favor of the, the, of the city doing it. This is specific to their event and, uh, I believe it's their responsibility. I'm grateful that you have all that participation, that's wonderful. But I think it is their responsibility to provide that.
Other discussion? Looking around, it didn't seem like anybody on the council thinks an extra bathroom is a problem. Question is who pays for it and who maintains it? My leading faces, right?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I guess.
Councilmember Rock?
The question would be, of course, if, if the church is paying for it, then it's going to be their seasonal and other people will be using it. And as long as you're under, you understand that, um, and, and with what's going on, I can, I can kind of see it the other way too, where one might be able to be moved. I don't know how much of the demand there would be in the summer to, for the city to pick up the expense.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Ricker?
Obviously, the church isn't the only one who uses those, the parks. We have Northwest Diamonds, I forget, I think they changed their name now. They use that fields and whatnot. You have other people, you know, in different events and whatnot at the park. You know, so it's not just the church, you know, using it on the dates that they use it. There are other people there, if there was one there, you know, and again, a perfect example is, and I agree, with small kids, if you have a couple of kids sitting there and you're, they're playing on the playground, it'd be so much more convenient to have a porta potty where you could watch that child go to the restroom rather than walk all the way around with a friend of the ones that are there now. So, there is a huge advantage of having one there, not just for their specific events.
Well, for, for a discussion, I would, I would say that, um, if the city is going to do that, I, I would recommend we, um, have a handicap-capable porta potty then. Most people would have to use the Jimmy Johnnys, would like the bigger bathroom anyway. And I think that's probably reasonable for our skating rinks as well. I don't know how many handicapped individuals do get out and skate, but if we do, we want to make sure that, and even if it isn't, if you're in winter clothing, I'd rather have the bigger, bigger one. So, if we're considering that, if, if the motion, and we'll be deciding this on Tuesday, so we discussed it today. But if we want to make that motion that the city would do that, I would recommend that we find out where the handicapped facility would be. And I would assume we have rates from last winter that probably apply, but if we could ask staff, Cory, to have you or Lori check on that for a price, get that out to us, we could then decide. But does anybody on the council have any reservation with an additional porta potty down on that end of the park? Okay, so it looks like you got that. Now the decision who's going to pay for it, it'll be determined and decided on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for what you're doing there and using our parks and keeping the kids outdoors exercising, so. Uh, we have a, uh, request for council action for the farmer's market.
Hey.
Hello.
I just sent, um, a budget form with some pictures of some items for, um, the tent that we had destroyed last year that we're replacing. So, basically, um, I am just asking to get the budget approved that I had some for this year. And I'd really just take any questions.
On your request for council action, you have approve a budget, acknowledge market manager change. What's the, what's the market manager change?
Um, yes, thanks for bringing that up. Dennis Blake has retired from the farmer's market to be available to do more conditions for it. And so, we have, as our board, asked Darlene King to be the new market manager and she has accepted that role.
All right.
And I also wanted to formally, we haven't done this, also, uh, we didn't do this last year, but I wanted to formally, um, ask for Mary Rainville to be the liaison again to continue that role with the market and with the city. So that we have someone, you know, that we can specifically talk to about market versus city information we might need.
Your fourth item was the approved donation of a weather band radio. What is the radio used for?
It is, what we do is we have a drawing every year. Um, and so, for the last couple of years, the city has donated them. We did not give, we had the approval to do that last year, but, um, we did not get that part of it done, um, the person that, the name, there was some issues, so we did get it pulled, the name pulled. So, basically, it's the same weather band that we had from last year, we just didn't get the name pulled by the end of the season, which was, we decided to do it at the end of the season instead of the front of the season. And the end of the season, there was a little bit of difference because we had an additional two weeks that we added on. So, um, the people who were in place to help with the drawing were no longer, um, available. So, that was some privilege that we had at that point.
What is, what is the purpose of the drawing? What are you doing with the names that you're gathering?
Um, getting people to come to the market and to try to, um, give people something positive when they're coming to the market to look forward to. Um, they come to the market each week and they can put their name into the box and, um, there's prizes that they win, there's prizes that they have that we do weekly, and there's prizes that we do, which is the grand prize, which would be that, um, weather band radio. And so, that gets them coming each week to get one little prize for the week and then then even going back into it to win the weather band.
And anybody who shows up to the farmer's market can enter for the radio. And so, we did not give away the radio last year, so we authorized the radio last year and we still have it. And, and how many radios do we have?
We have three left.
And where do we get those?
We have to order them, um, through, uh, Ocean Anic, I don't know if I get the name of the company. We used vinyl vault, but then we didn't find that people were, there was, nobody wanted them. So, we had quite a few for a while and then we've been giving them to Linda each year for that drawing, but, um, then we bought, we sold some, but that's a part of it.
I know we originally got them because we weren't certain everybody in the city could hear the sirens, depending on which wind was blowing.
We do advertise that they are available for purchase at the city hall, but apparently nobody's, nobody's coming.
Well, I'll tell you, if you're anywhere close to hearing when it goes off.
Right.
Poor people that were on this ball dino the other night when they did the six forty-five one?
Yeah.
It was, it's loud. You're not going to miss it here, so. All right, so, we have a budget before us, we have a acknowledgement of the market manager change, and a request to acknowledge that Mary is the liaison and approved the weather band radio. Comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ricker?
I do have some questions, obviously. This is a city-run committee, more or less, or city running that.
City activity, correct?
The city is funding. Should we not then, or if they have a board and they have meetings, should that, those not be public meetings? And recognized and minutes taken and, and just like anyone? Is it a public meeting, is it noticed, is it, you know, again, I, if we expect everybody to follow the same set of guidelines and rules, if this is a city-sponsored group or committee, they should follow all the same rules as our other committees, in my opinion. That's my opinion.
And I want to be clear on how the, um, farmer's market was founded. The, the part, what happened was that, um, when I founded the, the farmer's market, um, the city was to sponsor the event in insurance only. So, it isn't like it is a, like, the city is responsible for anything. It is completely one hundred percent funded by the market itself. How we fund the market is that the vendors pay a fee and that fee is what we, I put into the farmer's market fund. And then I request this money back and it's for accountability purposes. I wouldn't necessarily really have to go that route, but I choose to go that route for accountability. So, the money goes into the fund and then I get the money back out of the fund and with all the specifications of why I'm needing the money. And so, as far as the, the board and as far as the meetings go, they're pretty laid-back meetings, you know, um, this is what we're deciding what we're going to do today. And that is because we're volunteers, one hundred percent volunteers, and getting people to get together consistently and, um, for any long period of time is quite a feat in itself.
And, and I have, I'm for the farmer's market.
Oh, yeah.
So, don't get me wrong there, but again, this is a city-sponsored event. Everything's going through the city. If you want to take the funds and do it.
It's not going through the city.
The funds go through the city, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the funds are going through the city, so that technically is taxpayer money as well. Because we, you know, you have a budget, obviously, you don't ha, you haven't earned all that money, so there is.
We haven't.
Well, last, okay, we're a little short, but anyways, it is a city-sponsored event. If the city is in charge of it or a part of it, it should be run like any of our other committees, that's just my opinion. If you, so choose to take it out of the city and do it on your own, then I don't have, again, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just saying, we have set guidelines, we need everybody to follow those guidelines regardless of what group or entity it is. You know, because in your budget, you're asking for a hundred dollars for meetings.
Yep.
Our, none of our meetings get, you know, for cookies, punch, and pizza, I don't know of any other committees that are getting funded for pizzas, punch. We're asking for business cards, fifty dollars. None of our other committees or commissions are getting business cards.
The city pays for yours, the city pays for yours.
For the council, not our park and rec, not planning and zoning, not anybody else, so.
The business card for staff would be me and the co-coordinator and the market manager, so that would be that staff, do you want to come? So, there's nothing that's coming, again, there's nothing coming out of the city that has not been put into the city. And money has already been put in for this year except a hundred dollars and with it, quite a few people, not quite a few, there's still more people who are coming to the market. So, the money that I'm asking for is not money that the city is putting out. The city has never paid a dime of their own money for what I have taken out, nothing.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bettinger?
And we all acknowledge that, we know that, but it's still, you're using the city checkbook to run it. The city's really overseeing that, so it is a city function. And, and then, once that becomes. And, and then, once that becomes a city function, there's state laws that we have to go by. And so you basically are a committee, and then you have to follow open meeting laws and everything else. It's not, it's not something that we're trying to pick on you, it's just, it is the way it is. You know.
No, and all I, all I'm saying, as Randy's pointing out, is we need to treat, we have the policies that we're developing.
What is it, the format, because we do, I am very, very OCD, and I do follow a format, I do have an agenda, and I do write the agenda down, I do write who's there, I do write what we talk about, because we already, the agenda tells us. So we do have, but what is it after that that you want from me, then?
Mr. Mayor, have you done?
Councilmember.
Well, I have a little more.
Okay.
And I know originally when you started this up, and I had mentioned that maybe running it through the Lions, because then, and, because they can care the insurance for you. So that, that may be an idea to, if you run it through them, then you, then you're not bound by the open meeting laws and stuff.
Yeah, I run it through the Lions, I run it through the churches, I run it through different organizations. The problem with it is, is that it is a 14-week program that the city, it's one of the very few city events that the city sponsors that is a community-based event that is consistently 14 weeks, where people can come in and enjoy their community. With that, trying to get the volunteers to do that weekly, plus all of the work that's done prior to that, I literally work every single month of every single year. Every month, I'm doing something that is getting the market in line, so that when it opens, it's, it's successful. And so trying to get somebody to put that much effort into it on a volunteer basis has been non-existent. If you know somebody who'd be willing to do that, I would love to hear from them. I would love to talk to them. So that is why nobody wants to take it on.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benj.
And it's not, I'm not saying, it seems like you enjoy doing it, I'm not trying to take that away from you, but it's just to help you get away from the, the legal part.
I would love that.
If you, if you took it out of the city's checkbook and stuff, so it's not being run through the city, then you're not obligated to the open meeting laws and all them other things.
And I'm totally open to any of that, it's, but there's nobody that's stepped up for that. I bet. There's just, there aren't enough, there's not enough interest and from any of the organizations that I've approached, and I have approached them all, to see if they would be interested, and they're just, there's not enough physical people to do the job that I do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
Based on the conversation tonight, I, I would suggest that we direct staff to contact the city attorney to find out what his legal opinion is as far as adherence to the open meeting law. If, if, if indeed you do have to, and, and you may well have to, it just hasn't come up before, so it is time to address it. To find out what that is, and then whatever the attorney tells us, you would just have to adhere to that.
That's fine, because I've always said I wanted to set this market up, so that if I step out, that whoever comes in, it's set up in a business format, so that, so I'm not objected, because I already do do that, I already do do that in a, a very, you know, what do you call that, form, it's not very informal form, I don't, so, you know, trying to get this open for three people, or maybe two to come to, I just don't, I don't know what my expectations would be from you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Miss, I, I have one more thing on that. The other thing I'd like to add to the request for council action is, Lynn and I had a conversation in regards to the purchase of things. In here is the purchase of this tent. And I would like to be able to see Linda work with staff that it, we are placing purchases like this using the city credit card, so that that eliminates the need for Linda to ask for reimbursement, for Cory to have to process that reimbursement. It has to come to council, it has to be, you know, it's a longer and out process for her to put out that money and between when she, when she expends the money and she gets her reimbursement. So I'd like to ask council if we could add to the council action that when possible, items needed for the market can be placed or purchased via the city credit card, and that the market manager provide adequate information to staff in order to make that purchase. And whether it's the copy of the, of the website picture with everything on it, whatever is necessary, that they have it, they don't, won't have any questions, and that it's done in a timely manner, and that it's not, staff has time to get it done and get the product ordered and get it delivered on time. A little drawn out, but.
And, and I agree with, you know, Councilman Rayville's comments, it's again, the more and more we go that way and do stuff like that, then again, that more and more tells me they are a specific city committee, and they should be run just like everybody else is. And again, I'm, I'm for what you do, and I'm not opposed, but if we have the rules, everybody's got to follow those same rules.
I just don't know what format you want me to do.
Well, and that's what we would have to.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Senator Bryan. Question for, could be Linda or anyone. I, if I could get a little backstory, why, why is the city in, what, was there a specific reason other than insurance that the city had to become involved with the farmer's market? Just to get the insu, insurance in case something happened?
We initially started on city property, so we had, so that's why we, I went before the city to see if they would be this sponsored specifically for the insurance. And so it was approved for that, is, and, and the farmer's market is primarily a community service, as far as what I'm trying to do, is trying to make it a community event. But as it has progressed, each year, it is getting bigger and better and overwhelmingly great, but overwhelming at the same token. I mean, it's a really good problem, because it is doing well, and, but as we do progress, there are more needs that need to be taken care of, and the city has approved, you know, incrementally, what can help seasonally with printing off, putting it on the website, putting it on the board, to read a board, things like that, because it is a community event, so. Little by, little, the city has been very, very helpful in helping with this community event. I have absolutely no, I have no complaints with the city. The staff has been fabulous, the council has been wonderful. It, I have absolutely no complaints. It's been, everyone has been wonderful, and I work very, very hard to try to make it a, a good community event for nothing.
Councilmember Record, if you. The primary concerns would that be, the structure of our committees, the open meeting requirements, that we be, the meeting be noticed, meetings be open to the public, meetings be documented in the form of minutes? Is that, is that the, the primary concern, or would there be anything else that you would like to see addressed?
No, you know, it's, yeah, it's just basically along with that, you know, we, we require or ask all our other committees, you know, or areas, you know, to follow set guidelines and, you know, do certain things, certain ways, and again, if it's a, if this is a city-run sponsored deal, it's, well.
It's a little, shoot, I'm like a little grass.
I, I understand what you're saying, it, it, it goes through the city, so that's, so maybe I'll change my way to saying it.
If someone wants to come to my, my little meeting, they're certainly welcome to, it's pretty boring.
But, well, okay, we'll put it this way, the city has its hand in it in some way, shape or fashion, so that's, and again, so it's, if the city has, we should know what's going on with it.
Absolutely.
And that's the way to do it.
Yeah, absolutely, I have no problems, I'm very transparent.
But if, but if they were to do what we do with the other committees?
Yeah.
Notice, five minutes. Basically, that would, would address your concerns at this point.
Well, it would accept that we have the volunteers, like I was telling you, sometimes the meetings are impromptu because of their schedules. Trying to get the three of us together at one time in a volunteer basis is really difficult. Every committee that I know up here, you guys are being paid a key here. So it's an incentive where, when we're as volunteers, and we're trying to do it between jobs, between life, trying to give some kind of a notice that we're gonna, the three of us are, the two of us are going to get together to find out where we're going to position the spots, the farmer's market spots. To try to, to try to do that, plus, you know, and remembering that it's on, it's on a volunteer basis, and telling people, you have to be here at this meeting, the chances of them having to specifically say, I can be here right at this moment, is, for me, it's been, it'd be great if they could commit to that, but sometimes they can't commit to it till the day of.
We, we've got a comment that we'd like to see what the attorney's opinion is, and if the attorney said, in this case, it's not necessary, we, we've done our due diligence. If the attorney says it's necessary, then we have to talk about what to do with it. Is, is the council, Councilmember Ray.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm wondering if a five-minute conversation between Linda and the attorney might help the attorney understand what it is that you do. Again, I, I know you have your early, your spring meeting, and you have your winter meeting, or your close-up meeting, and those are held here. As far as meetings throughout the time, I, you know, that, I don't know what you're doing. I, I know you guys have conversations, because you have to figure out what you're doing. But maybe a conversation between Linda and the attorney, so she can give, explain to him what it is they're doing, and using that information, he will know better how, whether it's, she needs to change something, or, or what they're doing is okay, and maybe just the spring and the fall one are open, I mean, I don't know. But I, I think the attorney should know how Linda has been running it, so that he can make a, a, a good decision, rather than guessing how things are done.
I think the other thing is, is again, if, if it's subject to open meeting, you're talking about a quorum, if you're talking with Ms. King about setup or something, two people talking about it is not the same as having a meeting.
Correct.
If the whole group gets together and you're deciding how to spend money and things like that, and you notice it, you tell people, here's, here's when we're meeting, and you hope whoever can show up, shows up. But I think it's appropriate to start with the attorney, because we may be making a mountain out of molotov. He says we're not, then we have to address it accordingly, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would also suggest that the state auditor be contacted as well. And the reason why is because we're essentially funneling money through the city funds. And the way that they're going to perceive it is whenever there's a short come of monies, the taxpayers' dollars are paying for it until we get the revenues. And what if there's a shortfall of revenues? Then it is essentially taxpayers' dollars that are paying for it. Because you come in with your budget now, and what's your budget now, and you're going to be expending funds, sometimes I don't get the money from you until the end of the year. So now we've expended taxpayers' dollars to pay for all this equipment and stuff, and we don't even know if what you're bringing in is going to be enough to cover it.
To that, and what Mary had talked about earlier is that I am paying for the stuff out of my own pocket and then getting reimbursed later.
But what I'm saying is that you're getting reimbursed from city funds, taxpayer dollars. So we don't know if what you're getting money back for permits that you're issuing is enough to cover the funds that we've reimbursed you for.
Yeah, usually I never even spend the amount. I have.
Right, but, but you are putting your money through city, and there are laws in regards to money going in and out of taxpayers' budgets and levies and stuff.
Okay, so can we then, should we look at maybe doing something that was talked about earlier, when you guys are doing your budget, put aside $1,000, or, I'm just putting that as a number, an X amount of money to be put aside for the farmer's market?
Then.
And then reimburse that to the farm, to that point?
Right, and I, and I kind of think we kind of do that, but then now you are using it as, unless we're making it as a full donation, you're collecting and you're going to donate X amount of dollars to it, it is an operating expense. And so therefore, in my opinion, and it may be the state auditor's opinion, is that it is a city event, because we're, it's an operating expense. So we have to kind of look at it at that aspect, too. So, but I think if a call into the state auditor, and, and that would have to take place as well.
Yeah, just let me know how you guys want it to go. I just really want to make sure everything is transparent, so that, you know, everyone is comfortable with how it's run, and
Right.
everyone knows where the money is going, and where it's coming from, I have no problems with that.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
And another addition, then, to the request for council action is to direct staff to contact the city, the state auditor, to know how we're doing it, make sure we're doing it right.
Yeah, I want it to rate, whatever it is, I want it to rate. I have no problems.
Council's okay with that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benj.
So all the equipment and stuff from under, so there's like a trailer, all that stuff is owned by?
The city.
Okay, and then, so does the city keep the liability and, and insurance on all that stuff, too, or?
Yeah, we have the insurance on it, but I don't know that it's been licensed yet.
From what I understand, as far as it being licensed, they said it is a, has a lifetime license on it. We've been going back and forth on that. But I, when I went to this, when I went to go get it licensed, they said it has a lifetime.
I think trailers now is a single one-time.
Okay. That's awesome.
I think they changed that law a while back.
But then I guess the other thing is, if, if it is city-owned, should the city not know where that property is being kept? I mean.
They do know. Everyone knows it's at my house. If they want to keep it someplace else, then it has to be there.
Because I understood it was at Nick's house at one time, as well.
When I was on vacation.
Okay.
And that was probably for one day. One, one week, one farmer's market day. It is 99.9% at my house, and my husband would love it if there was another location for it.
Any other questions or comments at this time? So we'll check with the attorney, we'll check with the auditor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I think the question is, is it a city event? Just for your, just, I don't know if you know, Linda, we, there is a, there is a line item for receipts, and there is a line item for disbursements in the budget for the farmer's market, so. In my opinion, they should literally match. They don't right now, but, I mean, it's pretty much like a net wash city event.
The budget, there was a, a line item for the budget for 2017. Oh.
But what he's also saying is that it's, it's classified then as a city event, because it's budgeted for.
Okay.
And the funds are rolling through the city. Right, so, so whatever it was.
But we'll still get it all clarified.
There's, there's an anticipated revenue, and there's an anticipated expenditure in our budget. There's lines for both right now.
No, we need to, I just, I just put in a bunch of money yesterday.
I don't know, I didn't, didn't.
So.
Did a deposit yet?
I don't know, if with all this new information, auditing and all that kind of stuff, I don't know what you want to do with it, but.
We'll ask the questions, and it'll, it'll become clear pretty quick.
Where to put it? Okay.
And was the money from last year's?
Mr. Mayor.
It's from down payments on this year's spots.
Oh, on the, oh, 27.
Yep. I have a different way of doing it. Sometimes we had to, people would pay me, and then it would depend on whether they were going to actually be able to be at the market or not. So there was a lot of that, so that's why I had to help, had to hold on to some of those funds until I knew for sure that they were making it to the market, because I did require from them to save that spot that they did put down money. So if they put down the money and they didn't show up, which has happened, or it wasn't a fit for the market, which has happened, then, then I'd have to return the money. So that's why that was sometimes put at the end. So now, I'm a little nervous about putting it in at the forefront, because I do have one pers, it doesn't matter, I do have, I just have to, I just have to figure this out. And, and that's just growing problems, that's all it is, which is great, it's a problem, but it's a good problem, so, you know, I, like I said, transparent, I want to do it right. I want to, if I ever step out of it, I want to make sure the person coming in doesn't come into a mess, and they follow the same, same rules.
All right, so staff will check with city attorney and state auditor, give the information back to the council, and then we'll proceed accordingly. Anything else?
I will not be there until it's, so is there any other questions that you have, any other comments? Anyone's got their vegetable garden in or around the company market, do you have that?
I was going to go with the crabs. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys as a city council and the city staff.
Thanks, Lynn. Troy Bednar.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. Troy Bednarz, I'm the only exec cabinet who's woodworking, also a resident of the. You'll see, you all have a copy of the request there. We do our annual car show on September the third of this, this year. Last year was pretty wet. We have averaged about a hundred, over a hundred cars every year. This year, we still made it over a hundred, but even being wet, we were fortunate enough to not have any damage on the property, you know, which was good, but a lot of cars didn't come because it was wet. So what we wanna do this year, I've contacted all the businesses from my establishment on the corner of Hundred and Ninety-Ninth and Iguana, all the way down to the end of Iguana, down by North Valley, and basically close that road for a period of nine to three, I think I have written down there. The event will run from ten to two, leaving one side of the road open, so cars can, collector cars can come in, back into one side of the road. People can roam back and forth, and then just enjoy the atmosphere and environment.
The, the access to the rental units there, is that, would that still be available?
Yep, everything will be available, yep. In fact, I've talked, I emailed and talked to all the businesses. The only ones that haven't replied would be the storage unit and Rum River Cabinets. All of them are fine with it. In fact, Eric Voight at the new, the sign company down there, sold, of course, as everybody knows, he's actually gonna provide the signage for us, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Linder.
The storage place was just sold recently. And I do have that gentleman's phone number.
Perfect.
Yep, that'd be great, thanks for this. We're also working with the other businesses in the community to participate. Just a side note, like Dock and Door is doing a special event for just their employees and workers and some of their people. Now that Garage has talked about it a little bit, I don't know if they're going to or not. The finishing company down on the other end, they're gonna do an event. Now, and this is, of course, outside the car show. The bars have been contacted, I know there's some interest inside of that also, and then the restaurants, and then also, last year, the nursery stepped in, had a huge showing there, they put on some demos, and I think about a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five people went up there to see their demos. We transported people up there, so it was, it was a pretty cool event.
Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
It's my Ray.
I just wanna get clarification, so you're, you're doing, you're closing Hundred and Ninety-Ninth?
Actually, Iguana.
Okay, so Iguana, from the corner of Hundred and Ninety-Ninth to the north?
To the north, correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I assumed, I just wanted to be sure.
We actually probably won't even, we'll put the signs there, but we're not even gonna need that far. I'm thinking probably maybe the Dock and Door, so, and if it's, and if it's dry, no issues.
Yeah.
Probably still do it, but as the Heritage Festival learned this last year.
Yeah, it's hard, yeah, no matter what's with you.
Get wet, and boy, you get a lot of issues. Last year, in fact, I had a bump, my insurance didn't happen, but I chose to. We, we calculated about two point four million dollars in cars there last year. So it was a really good event, even with the weather that we did have.
Other questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
I guess the only comment I have is just, you know, obviously, if we close that off to make sure that it's still accessible to emergency vehicles.
Absolutely. Really, the, that's, the key is to back the cars into one lane, which would be the lane heading northbound, leaving the southbound lane open at all times, so you could transport emergency vehicles, storage, the signage guys, I talked to them already, they said they, depending on roads and what they're at, they may be needing access, we always will have the north side open no matter what, and then we'll be staffed by my, my employees or my staff, so we'll make sure that it's constantly open or accessible.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
I also had to ask Cory, 'cause last year, they used our parking lot, and I thought if, if you were gonna need it again, that we'd do it all at once, but you're not using it, so.
We don't need it. We only had about three cars over there last year.
Oh, okay.
And with some of the other businesses participating, I don't think we're gonna have an issue with parking at all, especially with the additional parking.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Mr. Bednarz, I'm just asking, and I'm sorry I missed you on Tuesday, I popped in to ask a question about, you were out, but your staff was helpful in answering the question. The, the big issue was that we weren't sure which part of Iguana you wanted blocked off, 'cause it just wasn't clear. But it sounds to me like it will be open, and I understand there'll be cars on that, I mean, does it need to officially be closed, or could it just be a one-way with signs?
We prefer it to be closed with access, because if we don't have the signage there, you could have just random people coming down, racing up and down that road, and like I said, there was a little over two million dollars in cars, and we wanted to make sure it's a controlled environment.
You're gonna have a problem, because people are gonna expect to go both ways if it's open. And people are walking around, they're looking at cars, they're not watching traffic.
They're not paying attention, for somebody that's got a kind of traffic mixture, you know, it's supposed to be, what, twenty-five, thirty miles an hour? I would say the average back there is about forty, forty-five.
No.
It's a nice car, I don't care.
Other questions from the council? Have we got enough information on the request for council action?
Thank you for your time, Mayor, council.
Thank you. Obviously, we'll, the official vote on Tuesday, but
I'll be here.
It sounds like there's no questions.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you noticed, Mr. Anderson's here now, I don't know if you would like to allow him to speak?
Uh, certainly. I understand if you would come to the podium, give your name and address, please.
My name's Chris Anderson, about one nine five three three, Marvin Lord, Good Boy Farmhouse. I mean, because I've thought, according to what I was doing last year, was approved with Liz and with Becky at the DNR. Bottom line is, I just, God bless, this is my first house I've ever owned, I got placed properties, then I had a four-wheel, I don't know, I had a blue, too. Started playing around with that car, suddenly, had a good event, not an adventure, just playing with people, just wanting to have fun, you know, in my place, and apparently, something happened, some elk house, and so that, that's why Liz and we got involved, and DNR got involved last year, so I went through everything I had to do, according to what Becky wanted at DNR, to get everybody happy, to be happy involved, and I have one event, and I wanna come on the band, but I had people over one time in the, in the fall last year, and Officer Salazar, the DNR consternation officer showed up, and he was, of course, extremely mad, but I'd had Becky out there, she gave me the line that I was supposed to put the berm at, she checked it off, and it was okay, 'cause he sat there and took down everybody's name, and my house, the driver's license, the other vehicle license, the four-wheel license, he said, I'll go back to Becky, and Becky said she did not approve this, you're all getting tickets, and not one person got a ticket. So, I don't know why, now this year, because I had, I'd get together this year, first best as I could, and the sheriffs were called, 'cause some guy came onto my property, and was just going, just being obliterating, said, shoot out my property, he called sheriff, sheriff came out, dealt with it, everything. But when that sheriff showed up, he said, I contacted Officer Salazar, on the way here, and he said, you guys are okay. So the guy, no tickets, no nothing, but now, since that guy called the cops, the sheriff, the sheriff came out, then you guys notified by the attorney, backed out, they come to my property, and now Becky said this time, that's not where I set the berm, and I'm just here to say, how can you, I don't understand this. I went this all summer last year, trying to make sure everybody was happy with this, just so we could have somewhere to play around, other than someone else's private property, or DNR land, or something like that, you know? I posted it now that both of, both of them, and I have one complaint, I had sixty-one comments on there about how they wished it could came, they're all for it, suggestions on what I should be looking for, taking care of, you know, and not one person complained. Yet here I am, sitting here going, now what do I do? Because what I had was approved by the DNR, and now she came up, you know, this, two weeks ago, and said, that's not where I set it. And I had a piece of paper with her with a line on it, that says where the berm is supposed to be. She brought out paperwork, or pictures of maps, nineteen oh-three was the first one, it was five, she showed me how, it did not progress, that water, that waterway behind me did not progress until they ripped out the barn, that blocked water, once they pulled the barn out of my property, it turned into watershed. She asked to explain to me that, that vegetation down there, and the soil is technically not wet, that and stuff, but since there's water and cattails, that could be one factor. But she went back to her office, Becky did, and worked everything out, for me, to be able to have it, and now something changed this year, and I'm not sure what. And I, this year, just, as you guys can just take a look at the facts, I mean, there was two places where they called, and there was said that I was approved in DNR. I was writing for the consternation officer himself, and it changed very calm, so, I don't, I don't know. It's my worst memory of this, so.
All right, so before you came, we did, we did get a summary from Lander Stockman, and we do have a letter here from this Wodman, Wetland Specialist, from the DNR. And I don't know what was said last year, but there's, there's two issues, one is the DNR issue, the other one is the city ordinance.
Yeah.
Like, you have four point five acres, you're not going to meet the ordinance for this type of activity.
'Cause I was, when I was a hundred feet too close, I was within a hundred feet of wetlands, is what, what the understanding was last year, so then, that's why Becky went and showed me how to play wetlands. That's where, this line that she had right here, that red line is exactly what she gave me, and she said, from right there to where I started my berm, I just wanna say, I had it out there with this piece of paper. I had Bobcat guys out there, invested money into building this berm like she wanted, and she came out there, this is exactly what she told me, she goes, I wish it was a couple of feet, if there were more of this, pay, and maybe a couple of feet higher, so a lot, since I can afford it, too, I'll have the guys out there, and that's it, that's all she said, said to me. And I had one, one, get together, like I said, Officer Salazar worked on about forty-five people's names, their licenses, everything, and he was more, more than willing to write down tickets, and he said, I'll contact Becky, we'll find out. That's all I gotta say, I don't know what else to tell you. I mean, she came and changed the ground, I don't know, I'm gonna, mercy of whoever does the control of this thing, I guess, I don't get it. Who am I, I'm being, sorry, but there's two, there's gotta be two petition persons, I can't get it, there's gotta be two petition persons at the sheriff's office, that's about, they were called, and they're contacting me, and one from last fall, one from this year, so. Too much red, black and white right there.
Mr. Mayor.
Stockman.
Well, that is one thing we haven't looked at, I mean, we haven't seen the actual sheriff's reports, that might be one way to prove what was, partially what was said, but the line, what Becky was explaining in the letter I just handed you, was the line that showed the measurement from the edge of the wetland to your corner of your accessory building, to give you an indication as to where that wetland edge begins and ends.
Okay, all there is to say is that, whatever she says now, is not what she said last year, and I can tell you, look at the police reports, it says. So, if whatever she put right there, 'cause when she came out last year, you know that she was very nice to me, this time, when she came out, she was very rude to me, I don't know why, I hadn't even talked to her, nothing. She just started going off on me, so I don't know what happened, but it's, I mean, like you said, I saw some of the police reports, and she was saying, 'cause you can see that there was a group. The sheriff told me, flat to the face, he said, I just shot cotton out of Officer Salazar on my ear, he said, you guys don't pay no for them, charging them.
Well, he, he and Becky would never be opposed to one another, because they are both working with the same governmental unit.
Exactly, so there you go, so now.
So, I, I, my feeling is that Officer Salazar was being nice, and he, he decided not to issue all those tickets?
Oh, yeah, you should have been at my house then, 'cause you were very rude. No, I'm just telling you.
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
It's possible that he was told to not make a bigger issue out of it, if he thought it was.
Last summer was a huge issue with everybody involved. I went, I had one thing in the beginning, and I had nothing all year till the last, till I had two in the last, last, in the fall, 'cause I did not wanna make anybody mad. Or whoever was getting mad, there was somebody was getting mad, other than that, nobody now that was, 'cause both of them were lit up, people wanted to come out, so they don't know what's happening, so I don't understand who complained in the first place, like, except for the person who caused a problem on my property, you know, other than that, I've not had any, I mean, I get people wanting to come, I don't, I don't. 'Cause I don't understand, so I was confused, council, too.
Well, I'm very sorry that you're upset, it basically comes down to your parcel not being large enough to accommodate, you know, what you wanna do, and certainly not within a wetland. If you had a bigger parcel and the area to establish possibly a pond that was man-made, it would be somewhat of a different issue, but as the map that I showed you indicates, you don't have the appropriate setbacks from the neighboring property, so it becomes a nuisance situation with noise, and those kinds of factors, that the setbacks are intended to, you know, alleviate.
So, and that's, that's the map you wrote about, that circle map? I can't find my stuff, my wife, I don't know where I left it.
Well, it is in the back, it's in the very back of the one I just gave you.
Yeah, so that's what I was saying, I said, hey, it's amazing, 'cause you guys all come to my place and have four-wheel berm, so, I mean, this.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part.
I, everybody that's in the circle right here, comes to my place for four-wheel berm, so it's like, if we're worried about noise, or if it's bothering people, I just thought it'd be ridiculous, I don't know, just fun, relax, just have a good time, and break your truck, fix it, come back, and it's the same old. Other than that, I know the kids were going down this DNR place, right down the road, from down about one sixty-three, and tearing that place up, and I said, don't go there, come here. You can get in trouble there. I mean, I used to do it when I was younger, I know, now I got home, so, we got all these rules, something like that, I don't know how to do this. I guess I was asking you guys, please look at the defense police reports, 'cause then you'll see that somebody, somebody approved it at some point, just the last year.
Well, I remember Becky telling you that it was okay, she was explaining the difference between just driving across a wetland, or around the edge, as opposed to actually tearing it up and disturbing the vegetation.
Yeah, that's right, that's why, remember, I explained to you when I came up here, I said she, she went back and found that, the vegetation doesn't match with the wetland, and needed a soil content, and it's three factors that you use to find out if it's strictly a wetland, and those, only one factor is there, but so it could kind of possibly be called a wetland. But that's one, because they removed the barn, and now the watershed's going down there.
Well, actually, removal of the barn would, would be alleviating or diminishing the impervious surface versus increasing runoff.
Well, if you knew where my barn, where the barn was on my property, it was right across that walk, that, that, it was right across, so the police had straighted off the side, I guess, I don't know, she explained it to me. That's what's so overwhelming, man, she explained all this stuff to you last year, so why is she giving that kind of knowledge?
Well, this is the, this is what she wrote today, regarding what she had told you last year, and this is what I remember, and I believe when you first came up to speak, you, did you not agree that that was the map she had given you?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I imagine you're lying.
Okay. That's what I thought you said.
Yeah, but what I'm disagreeing with is that, now she says this is where the, where the edge of it is, whereas last year, that's where she told me to put the berm.
Well.
That's why, why would I pay guys who will put berm there, when that's not where she wanted? Do you understand that?
But when I was there this year, though, a week or two ago, I didn't, I didn't see a berm there, though.
What, yes? Okay.
You, by a berm, are you, can you describe what a berm is, just a pile of dirt around it?
Yeah, if, if one berm that goes straight across, it's a perfect line, it's a, runs parallel with the edge of the cattails, the length of it, it's there.
Oh, so you put it kinda back across the land?
Yeah, that's where she wanted it, I blocked off, she said, from that one, at that point, stay that far away, we're good. 'Cause in nineteen oh-three, the water hole, this hole, was like this big, and there was two more, she gave me five maps, two more was that big, that big, and then the fourth map, it started growing a little bit, and the fifth map, is when it really started growing. That's when it just started moving, so, I see, I understand that, I mean, it's, so I just don't get this, I don't understand what's going on, and if, I am here to ask you guys if I could do it, I thought I had to get approval through her, so she said no, so, I said to you at, at my house, there's nothing I really need to do to see you, but I thought I'd come check this out anyways. 'Cause by and far, the DNR has changed it, now, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray. Lander Stock.
Mr. Anderson, did you get the email that I sent with my memo, and that's what, that's what's in this packet?
Yeah.
I, I think, I think I'd like to meet with you again, so I want you to understand it, I don't want you to be, I mean, you still may be upset, because I know you really wanna do it.
Well, I understand what you're trying to say, what you're saying, you're. Well, I understand what you're trying to say, what you're saying here. But then that's cool, you could talk about that stuff now, but the thing is, is it's moved. The DNR said, no, that's not the line.
Two things, though, you've got the DNR issue with the wetlands, and the city ordinance, which is the thousand-foot big circle. And whether those people want to participate or not, there's still a city ordinance that says, you know, from a nuisance standpoint, anything that involves in a track-type pattern on the land, the noise, that there's a certain ordinance that is referenced here that is not allowable on a 4.5-acre parcel. So your parcel, whether we could work out the wetlands issue with the DNR would be a whole separate issue. Your parcel would not be allowable for this type of activity. I think that's what Planner Stockman is trying to explain, is the two issues, whether, whether there's a discrepancy on what the DNRs said last year and this year. They're clearly stating right now what their position is. But representing the city for us, as Planner Stockman, reinforcing the ordinance that we're bound to uphold here as a council. And on 4.5 acres, as much fun as it might be, it's not allowed within our city ordinance. And that's, that's the issue.
So why does someone come here in front of you then? I mean, it's like, that's, why did you tell me to come here if it's the city, I mean, what am I coming here to talk to you about? If you told me to come here to talk to you about, I mean, so, you just get married, you tell me that it's not gonna happen. It's the ordinance, I mean, if it could happen, I'd beg you guys to let me try it out, you know, and see how well it goes. I mean, you got, dang, you guys got people getting in the yard, fields torn up all the time. I know, but I talked to you guys, I told you, yelling all the time for it, you know?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert. Question, question, and I don't know if this is something that's possible or not, but, you know, the initial noise ordinance is, is so that people aren't running these tracks 24/7, 365 days a week. Is there a way, again, if DNR would approve something or anything, where we can allow somebody to do, do, you know, a single event a year? Where obviously, you know, you're in violation of the ordinance, but it's on, you know, a specific date, time, so. Because initially, again, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my, my understanding of the ordinance is, because we've had, we had issues with some dirt bike tracks and whatnot, and that was so people weren't doing this on certain-sized lots all the time. Or if this is on a specific date, everybody's aware of it, it's acknowledged prior to. Is that something that is a possibility? And again, I think there's a bigger issue with the DNR, but if someone could get past that, is there another option?
If terms are used, I, I appeal.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
You wouldn't be able to get past the DNR issue, I don't believe, on his site.
I don't think so either, but.
On not on that property. I think if you had a big enough site where you could meet the setbacks and create a pond that were, wasn't, wasn't wetland, protected wetland, you know, that might be something to consider. And I had referenced that kind of like commercial recreation-type ordinance, too. Or, yeah, it could be processed as an event. But even the place up in Crown that existed, they had 20 acres, and they still had issues.
You know what, because they have, they allow camping, they allow people to be there at past 9:30 at night. Not my place, that's what happened, that's why, there was a guy stuck in my motor last year, that's the guy called the cops, said all kinds of crap, because I wouldn't let his buddies come in at 9:30 at night and try and pull him off. Three big trucks over at 9:30, I said, no, you guys got to go. They want to write the bills and call the sheriff.
But the county never allowed that?
I mean, I'm just trying to say, like, I'm not that person, I thought the murders were people, you know. Well, Tim right in the morning, he was here last time, it was a great time, I've talked to him very much lately, it's never wrong, but.
Well, perhaps we could have a discussion at planning and zoning or something, if the council wanted to take it that far, about a once-a-year thing? Where you're required to come in and, you know, reestablish ground cover and whatever types of conditions you might want to establish.
And remember, Becky, I talked to Becky about that, what would you like me to rebuild or put back in, and she never got back to me on that either. Because that's when she told me that the vegetation and the soil aren't actually wetland soil. So they couldn't plant the stuff that has to be there for wetlands.
Well, we most definitely talked last year about re, about grading it out and then establishing ground cover there. And when I saw it this year, it still hadn't been revegetated.
Because I don't, I don't know what you're supposed to plant, I don't know, I'm in the city, sorry.
Well, things would naturally come back, too, if it hadn't been disturbed, see.
It's going right now, the burms all going, everything's going right now, so. But if there's any way that this might be able to work out, I'll, I'd be willing, whatever you guys want from me. It's like my life on my own, my life on my own private muck hole. Whatever's passed that, I mean, I guess it's possible.
Any other questions on the part of the council? Planner Stockman, you got something else you want to say?
Sorry, I was going to say that the county did adopt some type of ordinance. Maybe it's worth a look to see what they adopted, I stand to be telling you, I don't know. But for now, Mr. Anderson, are you of the understanding that you're not too, too mud running?
Standing, I got it, yeah.
All right, I'm really sorry.
No, it's fine, man, that's why I did everything I tried to do last year, make sure everybody's happy, so. So who's to do it? Not I, I don't want to get into people in trouble, that's my own, myself.
Anything else at this point? Joe, so, we'll talk about culverts. Sounds like you got Jarvis already, or? Is Jarvis already being done?
Yeah, it's getting, culverts get put on Jarvis tomorrow. That's not the five that needed to be placed.
Huh?
That's not the five that I was talking about.
No, that was impossibly. You were talking two on 205th, two on Hillendale, one on Very Light, and then possibly one on Jarvis, which is being done. And we're paying for part of that? And the other ones?
Material out, material back in. Help over the fence, the culvert from Blacktop, and then we call up the contract.
In your request for council action, you said the city does not have equipment necessary to replace these culverts, excavator and backhoe. Is that something that can be rented? More cost-effectively than hiring a contractor? Compromise, would you have the manpower to do some of it and contract some of it? And right now, see, we bought some culverts. Do we have enough culverts to proceed at this point?
Yes.
Councilmember, have any other questions on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
So, Joe, are the culverts replaced, are we replacing them with metal or concrete? And of, of the five, is there, do you have it prioritized as to which is worse? You know, are they all in the same condition? Did they all deteriorate just since spring?
Twenty-five, and then fifty years, so they're retired.
Any of them that are worse than the others, or they all pretty much?
Yeah, one's out of order.
Which one was that?
So, so one of the two on Hillendale is the worst?
All right, so we've got money for culverts, we've got the culverts purchased. Joe, you can tell us what makes sense as far as rental versus contracting?
Well, I was thinking, I live for a week, I just share a month myself, about thirteen to fifteen hundred dollars. I guess, I guess, can we take it out for bids and see what's cheaper?
All right, any other questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
One of the culverts on Very Light, this back, on private property, it's an outlet for a pond. Do we have the permission to go back there? It's got plastic all over it now, it's all ripped up and collapsed.
And it's on private property, why would we be replacing it, just to?
We don't, it's back to water for our boots. I don't believe it was due to the minute. We need to go in there this spring and I'll play it.
Has that been, excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
So has that one been backing up the last couple of years, or just this year, or just this year?
Had trouble with it about twenty years ago, remember I had a trouble in the sense, this year it backed up. Oh, I think they've got a new road, a path, maybe the culvert's been lowered, it's got its pieces.
So, Joe, that one was backing up water, and how do you determine the other ones? How do you, how do you determine the other ones need it?
We had to jet them out, and they're in pretty bad shape.
Do you think, throughout the city, any others that you're concerned with, or at this point?
No, I mean, it seemed to pop up, and it needed to pop up.
Any other council question?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benton here.
So the bid is just for a hole and operator to do the digging?
Last year, or two years ago, we approached the culverts and the cherry wall. They drank all the labor and they started. I had a problem with the concrete.
All right, right now he's just asking for a bid, and then we can take, make sense when we get the bids in. Anything else from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benton here.
I just want to make one more comment, on these culverts we put in, we need to keep an inventory on where they're at. And at some point, if we can get coordinates on them and elevations, it's going to be coming down to the new watershed plan as a requirement.
We have the locations on the map, but I don't have the operations, you know.
Yeah, so if there's a way that we can get, they actually are going to, depends upon how they write it, but the other night, they were talking about actual coordinates of the pipes, or the pipe ends, and then elevations for the inverts.
Anything else? Dust control bid? Joe, did we do these same roads last year?
No.
Do we, do we do roads repeatedly? I mean, do we do some roads every year, or?
Some on this. I agree badly, I tell miracles, I never had agreed with one's last year. Why not spray it again?
I think there were some you were gravelling last year, and had to settle in before you. And weren't there some you were gravelling last year, so you were going to dust them this year, control them this year? So were the roads done last year, you're not going to do this here, then?
We don't deal, we're, uh, we don't deal with humans who don't really gravel, not the first of them who really gravel.
All right.
The ones that got scheduled dust control, one of them gravelled last year.
Anybody else got anything on the gravel plan, or the dust control plan?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I'd like to ask you, what was your process on getting bids for the dust control? How many vendors did you contact?
Three.
Three?
Five.
As I, early in the spring, I got an email from the company that did it last year and asked, they asked me what we were doing. And I said we'd be starting discussions on it, and that I'd keep, keep, keep them posted of where we're at. I watched the road and bridge meetings, watched the, the meeting minutes. In February, we tabled it, March, at the March meeting, you said you were going to go out for bids as soon as the council approves, that these are the roads you want done. And then based on the bids that came in, they're dated like March 29th and 30th. So you went out for bids prior to having the council having the conversation on it. And the contractor that did it last year said he was never contacted. And then I told him to contact the city offices to get on the list. And he said he did email, but never got any response, and.
Were you happy with the stuff last year?
I'm sorry, what?
Were you happy with the stuff last year?
I never had any complaints on anything last year.
How come you're always reading?
How, I'm sorry, what?
How come you're always reading your roof?
I don't know. You're saying that's because lack of dust control? So you, so you, did you, you did or did not contact the company that did it last year? You did not. Did you ever contact them to say you had issues with what they had done?
I have issues from five, six years ago.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I think staff is fully capable of, you know, if we're contacting three companies to do it, I could care less who he contacts. If he's not satisfied with the vendor who did it last year, that's his option, that's not up to us to decide. He's doing what we've instructed him to do by contacting three vendors to get three quotes. Who those vendors may or may not be, that should be his call. He knows a hundred times more about what's going on in the roads than any one of us will ever know.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And I understand, Councilmember Rickert, I guess when you talk to a vendor that because they did the work last year, never had any feedback, and expected to be contacted, and wasn't. But I'm not the one going out for bids, Joe.
Do you prefer to wait?
I, I don't even know, I wouldn't recognize this person if they walked in here. I've only had email contact with them. But it, it, again, I mean, I tried to do this, close bids before in conversation with them. This contractor says that they prefer closed bids, it just puts everybody on an even, even playing field. And I guess if we're having issues with contractors, then we should contact those contractors and say, this is, these are our concerns. If things weren't done properly, have them come out and redo the roads. But if there's not any conversation or communication between us and the contractors that we're paying to do work, and if you feel that work is inferior, it's your responsibility to contract, contact.
I have talked to them, I've talked to them last year, I've talked to them six years ago, I've talked to them a few days, I've talked to them a year and a half ago. I know the stuff.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
So, well, Councilman Rainville, so you're telling me every time you're dissatisfied with a product, you call that company and say, hey, I don't like this? you call that company and say, hey, I don't like this, and get, give them your feedback?
To Councilmember Rickert, yes.
Every single?
As a consumer, yes.
I would say ninety-nine point nine percent of people don't do that, but.
Well, for our concern, throughout the business, we're trying to the same office, I don't really care.
Anything else at this point?
As for the bids that we got, I couldn't tell you what they are, other than I never even worked them.
Everything, everything about seven hundred dollars. Garage roof. Joe, this pro panel, twenty-nine gauge, is that similar to what we've got like on the recycling center?
Well, it's a seven. Now, it's fully empty and stuff.
Anybody know the difference between the standing seam system and exposed fastener system?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert?
One is basically just that, is when they overlap, some have interlocking channels, so then that way you don't see all the fasteners. Because basically, the way you fasten them down, it's a sheet metal screw with a rubber overing washer. And one style is you don't see all the fastener heads, the other style you do. Aesthetics more than anything.
Have you got any questions on, on that? I would assume, certainly a metal roof, short of a hailstorm, is going to last longer than asphalt. If you get a hailstorm, they got insurance.
Mr. Mayor, one of the things that I know that kind of with the funding issue, I don't see that it would be a problem, that we could probably get it by with capital funds, part capital funds. I think I can probably convince the contractor that that would be a capital improvement. Because it is expensive, and it is a pretty much a building.
Give it a call?
Right.
I would water give them a call, or call them, or do it.
I'll just do it, and then we'll, we'll, I'll say no, it was a capital improvement. Yeah, I'd give them a call, and if it's going to be an issue.
I wouldn't think so, it's capital expenditures. Any other questions?
Just, yeah, whether we go shingles or tin, either way, see if it makes a difference.
Does the council have an opinion on the metal versus the asphalt?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert?
I'd say metal, by all means. I, I actually just replaced the roof at our cabin up north, and we went away from asphalt to all metal.
Any else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant?
I mean, I don't see that building necessarily moving anytime soon. Age-wise, are we going to get more than twenty years out of the metal roof?
Yeah.
And I would say in either case, that whatever, it's, either option's going to still have the same amount of roof decking replacement, I'm assuming, if anything's damaged underneath.
What's that?
Everything underneath, if.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't change.
No.
I know we have that wind problems down there before, we've lost shingles on that thing a number of times, so. I would, I would lean towards the metal. Anybody else? All right. Consent agenda? There was some question on the bill about Steve's unemployment. Or he has checked that out. We certainly want to make sure that with what was brought up today, we, I think it's reasonable to ask one more time if all the other benefits are being paid, is that really reasonable to take a seasonal employee? Here now, but. Anybody else get a bid?
Oh, I was going to say, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I have checked into it already once, when he applied. What you, understand what happens is usually when one of the employees applies for unemployment, all of a sudden, they send a report to us that says, did this person work between this date and this date and get paid this weight, rate of pay? Now, I have looked into it, I did not, never find anything that says just because they receive a pension or anything that they're not warranted, but my understanding is it's up to that employee also to report all of their income, whether it's a pension, or retirement, social security. So, but I'll double check into it, but I would think if anything, he would definitely be the one who would also be getting in trouble for filing if, if he wasn't allowed to do so.
Is it, is it possible you could check with your, your clerk's network and see what other people do for seasonal? Because I understand that in contractors that take the winter off. It surprises me with the seasonal.
That's what we were shocked about when this happened before. Because Steve is not the first one that's ever applied. And that's when we first started looking into it, and there was never anything said that you couldn't apply if you're seasonal.
Is he still collecting right now, or?
I don't know, because this is, this is from like a few quarters before, so it, it's only once a quarter that they require us to pay.
Because we should report it that he was offered to come back, and he turned it down, because then that would cut him off.
That true, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anything else on the consent agenda? Liability, I think that's pretty standard for us. All right. We're down to the HVAC system.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant?
I just updated the RCA, Jim did change the quote to reflect that the secondary furnace that would be, you know, in the addition, did, they recalculated it, and that it would be eligible for a forty, four hundred dollar rebate, instead of just a three hundred. Talking with Cory, in addition to the, the money from the Hamley Chamber of Commerce, we could use the remainder of the money to come from the two thousand sixteen carryover funds, from, from the general fund, there were two one-time revenue sources that could be used, and then that gets us within the eight hundred dollars. And then, if we need to pay for the permits and the electrical, that could come out of the excess that we use for the money we didn't spend from last year's budget for electrical and gas. That should cover it.
Yeah, in the meeting with Jim, the furnace in the addition is thirty-two years old. We didn't have him test it, just because if he tested it, it didn't pass, he'd have to shut down that furnace as well, so. We're prepared to let it keep going until we decide it here, but that is thirty-two years old. The one in this building's at least that old. And we know this one has, has its issues. The air conditioner is at least nineteen years old, nineteen or twenty. And part of the reason that they have the size air conditioner they have is because of the ductwork we have. So, it's oversized and probably very inefficient, so. The recommendation would be to replace both furnaces, and have separate air conditioners for the smaller one for the kitchen side, and the larger one appropriately sized for the ductwork here for this building.
Mr. Mayor, just one line I'd like to make, is in speaking with Dan, when we discussed carryover funds, one thing that the council still needs to understand is that you will be going over budget in 2017, because this was not a budgeted item. Your carryover funds from 2016 are not reflective in your 2017 budget. So, essentially, by doing this, you still will be looking at going over budget, your budgeted items. It's just that the revenue services will come from just the general fund of the county.
The cash is there, it's just not going to show up right in the budget.
Correct. So, you will go, it will show that you are over budgeted.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville?
To Cory's comment, but best case scenario, we're under budget and other things.
Yes, what we're hoping for, yeah.
Then we would hope they'd be washed, not a guarantee, but.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yeah, the point was that we need to look at it in budgeting, that it makes sense to start having a rainy day fund.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we haven't replaced these in thirty-two years, it's not something that we were aware of, but we should, in, in our budget process, take a look at our capital properties and evaluate longevity and things like that, and start budgeting for that. If we'd have thought, you know, thirty-two years, yeah, it's way beyond the furnace. What, what they're making today, they're not even guaranteed. You'll see anything like that, if you see twenty years, you're going to be lucky. On the Goodman's, he, he was saying it's probably a ten-year furnace. And on, on the air conditioners, you'll never see a twenty-year air conditioner again, so it's just, it's unfortunate, but it's like buying appliances now. In the old days, they might last thirty, forty years, and now if you get fifteen, they're telling you you got really good.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert?
You know, based, you know, going through this, I understand that the other, we had two companies quote us the train.
Yep.
Furnaces. I understand that one wouldn't call back or whatnot. But still, with that said, obviously, now, in the season we're in, we're not, it needs to be done. Everybody agrees with that, I don't think we're in dire need right now. The problem that I have is just automatically going with this bid, because with the two bids that we saw with those two different people for the same equipment, there was thousands of dollars difference between the furnaces and the AC units. And this being the higher of the two.
We, we asked that specifically, we said, because we told them, you're hired in competition, it's also quoting train. And the, the train model that the other company quoted us is an obsolete model. It's no longer available, he has obviously some inventory to be able to quote it to us, but it's no longer provided by train. So, a support issue was a concern there. It is, it is cheaper, but it's an obsolete model.
Mr. Mayor. Furnace that you have in your house, the furnace that I have in my house, is an obsolete model. Can you get service on your furnace? Yes. Can I get service on my furnace? Yes. So, as far as making a selling point of you saying, well, this one's twenty-five hundred dollars cheaper, but we can't get serv-, I don't agree with it at all. There's parts out there for, and there's so many universal parts now that can go into, and if, in all reality, a lot of the units now are made in the same facilities, they just slap a different label on it, and this is train, this is whoever and whoever. Again, I don't like, and I'm not comfortable automatically going with one that was considerably thousands of dollars more expensive than another, just because we have one saying, he's saying it's an obsolete unit. Secondly, if you look at, go back and look at that spreadsheet, he was quoting a ton and a half train air conditioner, and the other guy was quoting a two-ton, which should be more expensive, but the two-ton quote was cheaper, by quite a bit. So, again, before we decide on this, because I don't think we're in dire need, I think we need to look at it more, because what I see here, compared to what we've seen from others, is thousands of dollars different.
Well, that was one of the frustrations, when we couldn't get a call back, that was also one of the concerns. You know, this gentleman made, made the effort to come to our meeting and present to us, and made the effort to follow up and, and meet with us and present. I mean, I, I talked to Cory about it, and it's one of the frustrations, if, if somebody doesn't even care enough to come and follow up on their bid and make a proposal, are you going to be able to rely on them to back up a warranty as well? This guy is, is in town, and he's been more than generous with, with his time and his information, but certainly, if we want to wait and contact the other guy, I'm, I'm willing to meet with that person, too.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert?
I don't think we need to limit it to the four that we talked to already. You know, there's hundreds of contractors out there who can do this. I think we need to, you know, get some, you know, if we're set on train, if that's the model we want to look at, let's find train, you know, companies who, that's what they've installed. And let's get some comparable numbers. I'm not opposed by any means having Jim do it, and, but again, based on the numbers that I saw on that spreadsheet, he was considerably higher, and we're talking about a lot of taxpayer money.
Well, the, the unfortunate thing is on that spreadsheet, what we didn't have were, were the ductwork, or some of the other, you know, that, that furnace, the other one that was quoted that was cheaper, is also a bigger furnace, and so it didn't allow for the four-inch filter system. We didn't know if, if he was quoting the, um, the name of the split system there that we have.
With the, with the.
The zone. The zone.
Right, with the.
It's already, the zone's already in, that's in the ductwork, it's already there. That has nothing to do with the furnace, really.
No, if we're not, if we're not asking anybody to do any ductwork, which we're not, in a sense, we're using what we have. It's, it's basically the installation of the furnace and the AC.
I thi, I think we need to decide what we want to replace, do we want to replace it all, or just the one furnace, or, and make that decision, and then go out and update your quotes. Have we decided whether we want to replace it all, and if we want terrain, or?